Good evening, and I call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our pledge and for invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, the source of life and light, open us to an awareness of your presence with us, guide us as we make decisions. Let us rejoice in the success of those who have dreamed and worked for goals, that we may celebrate with them. In this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Will you join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the roll please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmore, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lauren Grue, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Connie, our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our last meeting. And council, you've had these well in advance of tonight. And that was from our May 16 meeting, incidentally. And so, the chair will recognize any motions, any edits, corrections, or anything else related to those meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Head of, motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have a presentation tonight. We have a full room of, I guess mostly parents at this point. I guess the baseball team are corralled out there. I'll call on our head coach Stuart Chester to step forward at this time. Sure. With us tonight, we do have head baseball coach Stuart Chester.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Appreciate y'all having us out. You know, these guys have accomplished a lot, and one putting up with me, but yet to compete and battle against our opponents and come up and win another state championship was huge, and we appreciate y'all having us out.
Thank you. I have a proclamation here on behalf of the city of Cartersville I want to read to you, I'll then come down and present it. I've got copies for each of the players for you to distribute. It says that whereas the Cartersville High School baseball team has consistently been recognized as one of the state's elite baseball programs, and whereas this year's Cartersville High School baseball team finished the season with a 30-7 overall record and a 14-0 region record, and whereas on Saturday, May 25th, excuse me, Saturday, May 25th of 2013, the Hurricane baseball team traveled to Gainesville, Georgia and defeated the North Hall Trojans by scores of 4-2 and 2-1 to win the AAA baseball state championship, and whereas this makes the sixth state championship for the Cartersville baseball program, and whereas the members of the Cartersville baseball team serve as a reminder that hard work, dedication, and commitment to a common goal can lead to great success, and whereas the members of the Cartersville baseball team continue to represent our community with excellence and character both on the playing field and off, and whereas we recognize the countless hours of commitment to Cartersville baseball by its players, I'm going to run laps for that, to players, by its players, coaches, volunteers, parents, and the entire Cartersville community. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of City Cartersville, along with our city council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June 6, 2013, as Cartersville Baseball Championship Day in the city of Cartersville, and I call upon all the residents of the city of Cartersville and of Hurricane Nation to celebrate the tremendous achievements of the 2013 high school baseball team.[266.86][266.86](applause) All right, our next order of business, Mr. Portiff, you'll handle that for us, please.
Mayor, that's the proclamation. Let's see, next item is appointment of Don Housbrock. We received resignation for David Myers for his electric director, and we recommend appointment of Don Housbrock as the new electric director for Cartersville Electric System.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Don, congratulations, and thank you. And David did not want me to recognize him during this meeting, so I'm sure he's not listening, but we're not going to recognize David because he didn't want us to. But thank you, David.[350.12][350.12](laughter) Richard, yes sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The city proposes to submit an amendment request to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to revise the homeowners participating in the city's community development block grant project for homeowners in the North Town area. It will be noted for the record that proper legal advertising has been placed, and the city is committed to fair housing in all cases. The original list of seven participating homeowners is changing. The amendment proposes to remove three homeowners from the list of participants since they have stated they have either, they either no longer wish to participate, or they did not respond to the city's certified letter noting a deadline of May 31, 2013. The amendment proposes to add three homeowners to the list of participants. The current list of participants is available as public record, but I will not read them at this time. The reason for this item, and the reason that this is an amendment request, is that the proposed changes will result in a significant change to the original application and requires a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the amendment. I will also note for the record that this item serves as a local quarterly update to the Cartersville Urban Redevelopment Plan. No action is needed by mayor and council, but I will ask the mayor in just a minute to open and close a public hearing. Now, this public hearing is intended for interested persons who, if desired, may speak. If anyone would like to speak, I have a sign-in sheet that they will need to fill out. If you will, please, Mayor.
Sure. I'll open up a public hearing relative to the CDBG grant project in North Town. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak on that particular project may do so at this time. And seeing none step forward, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item. As Richard mentioned, there is no need for council action on this item, so. Speaking of not taking action, we've got a couple first reading of ordinances. Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable mayor and council, since our May 23 meeting, our budget has made some changes to. Current versus the budget stands at $145,208,235. This is a decrease of $121,185, or a 0.8% decrease. Changes to the proposed budget include, we were notified recently that our life insurance and long-term disability insurance premiums will increase. We've had a decrease in the credit card expense that we will now pass on to the customers who use it. We've had an increase in workforce crews as a result of changes from Hay State Prison to Ford County. We have added intern positions to public works, water and sewer, any letter. Budget comparison, a couple of big items. I'll look through the whole thing that I looked at on the 23rd. General fund has decreased by $553,000. Electric fund increased by $2.3 million. This increase is simply due to cost of purchase of electricity. Another big item is the gas fund. It increased $2.3 million, also due to increasing gas purchases. The remaining two large items, the S2, 2003, 2007, both decreases over $2 million. Both of those are due to projects being completed in this fiscal year. And we'll talk to you about the budget comparison by type. Personnel has increased by $362,000. It's mainly due to insurance increases. More operating increased by $133,000. Personal commodities, as mentioned briefly, increased $6.3 million. School board preparation decreased by $501,000. Debt services increased by $4.3 million. If you remember back in January, we issued chans that will need to be paid off this year. And capital projects has decreased almost $11 million. This is a graph of the last seven years budget comparison. You'll note in 2009, it jumped all the way to $169.5 million, and this year, 2014, proposed budget is at $145.2 million. In the last ten years of stating, you'll note that in 2009, we're at a high of 367 employees. We have actually come down this year from 360 last year to 358. Other points of the budget are we have included funds for the grant right to be shared with the Carter County, also sharing the cost of Keep American Beautiful, also sharing costs with city, county, mapping and phone system, and further sharing costs with economic development. Outside agency funding, this year, the proposed budget here is a total of $609,200 in it. One big difference in last year and this year is we've taken out the Downtown Development Authority as it is a part of the general fund budget. And finally, we'll talk a little bit on the water and sewer rates. Even the proposed increases that I'll talk about shortly, we will still be one of the smaller or less cost, I guess I should say, of the surrounding areas. You can see that the proposed cost goes up to $20.85 versus the current cost of $19.20. I'm sorry, the total cost for, actually, the water. The total cost is $42.13, and the current, I'm talking proposed, the current was $39.84. And the electric rates, again, compared to our, compared to Georgia power, we are below Georgia power. Again, this is for residential customers only. The funding we have residential gas. You'll note that the Cartersville gas system is $1.17 per term. That was for the time period of January 1st through December of the 31st of 2012, and that ranged from $1.17 per term all up to $1.53 per term. That is my presentation for the proposed budget.
This is the first reading. Any discussion needed by council at this time, or any questions for Tom?
Mr. Reinhardt, I have a question. What percentage of a salary, you may, you may not know this often, is a furlough day?
From my recollection, when I looked at the past, one furlough day for the city was about $90,000 costs overall.
But for an individual salary?
That would depend on individual salaries. I don't have that coming out of what we have a salary.
There is no percentage. I have down here 5%, but I'm not sure.
I don't have it. I don't want to quote something, and then it'd be a burden.
No, absolutely not. Thank you. But I was just thinking about all the considerations that went into this budget. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? Okay, this is the first reading. There is no action required by council now. We'll have a second vote at a future council meeting. Next item.
The water and sewer rate increase, four minutes is ahead of you. We've got a slide, a presentation here also. Remembering our May 1 sort of meeting, I talked about three increases. The first increase is a proportionate increase in the lowest tier rate. This is due to increased operational costs and maintenance costs. This will add about $1.40 per month for the average residential customer based on 7,500 gallons per gallon. The small increases proportionate increase have been occurring since 2007. The second increase is an increase in the monthly base water rate. Our current base water, monthly base rate is $6. Proposed increase is $6.90. This is a 15% increase. There's been no increase in this particular rate since its inception in 1988. And the third increase involves commercial fire service rates. The proposed increase is a 50% increase in both in-city and out-city limits. It's due, again, to maintenance costs of increasing all these water lines and need. And the water sewer rate, the proposed increase, like I said before, Cartersville will still remain one of the lowest residential rates in the surrounding areas, and these rates are increased, proposed rate increases are now associated with a decrease in capacity fee that was done seven years ago. And once again, we have the rate chart showing that we are, and we will remain one of the lowest in the surrounding areas.
Questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? Again, this is the first time we're seeing this. We'll take this up for final consideration at a future meeting. And Tom, if you'll move on to the next item, please.
And finally, honorable mayor and council, PSC has mandated that we have a new requirement for our toilets, the residential gas customer. The city is required to adopt a policy for Ford County and for the PSC regulations. We felt, I felt like that instead of just adopting it for Ford County, we need to also extend that to Marston County residents and also to DeFartville residents. Essentially, what this will do is, as long as a customer has new payment service history level for a plan for a month period, we will be required to return or refund the deposit money back to them, give a check back to them, or credit to their account. We also felt like that it was nice for us to extend this down to gas customers or also electric and water also.
Okay. Any questions on this item?
This is a time sensitive issue, as Gary mentioned, and it does need to go back to DSC about 20th of June, so if we can do anything to get that on next meeting, head up a, because I have a meeting.
Thank you, sir. Duly noted. All right, next item, Mr. Anderson, you have that item.
Mr. Mayor and council, for our Dillon Park pool, which we opened over Memorial Day weekend, we had a contract with the Dockery Group in an amount of $975,000 and $375,000. There were requested four change orders during this construction process. One was for the tying on of the park office sewer line, did an upgrade in some toilet paper dispensers. Then one change order was for the pressure testing and the repairing of leaks of our existing gutter system, which, which we, which we're able to use. And then we had a change order from concrete paint to stain. These change orders totaled $9,327, making our total contract with Dockery Group $984,376. I recommend approval of these change orders.
Okay, any discussion? And if there's none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the annual agreement. We have the Optimist Club for our July 4 celebration in Dillon Park. I recommend approval of this contract with Optimist Club.
Once again, any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Don, congratulations, and thank you. And David did not want me to recognize him during this meeting, so I'm sure he's not listening, but we're not going to recognize David because he didn't want us to. But thank you, David.[552.12][552.12](laughter) Richard, yes sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The city proposes to submit an amendment request to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to revise the homeowners participating in the city's community development block grant project for homeowners in the North Town area. It will be noted for the record that proper legal advertising has been placed, and the city is committed to fair housing in all cases. The original list of seven participating homeowners is changing. The amendment proposes to remove three homeowners from the list of participants since they have stated they have either, they either no longer wish to participate, or they did not respond to the city's certified letter noting a deadline of May 31, 2013. The amendment proposes to add three homeowners to the list of participants. The current list of participants is available as public record, but I will not read them at this time. The reason for this item, and the reason that this is an amendment request, is that the proposed changes will result in a significant change to the original application and requires a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the amendment. I will also note for the record that this item serves as a local quarterly update to the Cartersville Urban Redevelopment Plan. No action is needed by mayor and council, but I will ask the mayor in just a minute to open and close a public hearing. Now, this public hearing is intended for interested persons who, if desired, may speak. If anyone would like to speak, I have a sign-in sheet that they will need to fill out. If you will, please, Mayor.
Sure. I'll open up a public hearing relative to the CDBG grant project in North Town. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak on that particular project may do so at this time. And seeing none step forward, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item. As Richard mentioned, there is no need for council action on this item, so. Speaking of not taking action, we've got a couple first reading of ordinances. Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable mayor and council, since our May 23 meeting, our budget has made some changes to. Current versus the budget stands at $145,208,235. This is a decrease of $121,185, or a 0.8% decrease. Changes to the proposed budget include, we were notified recently that our life insurance and long-term disability insurance premiums will increase. We've had a decrease in the credit card expense that we will now pass on to the customers who use it. We've had an increase in the workforce crews as a result of changes from Hay State Prison to Ford County. We have added intern positions to public works, water and sewer, any letter. Budget comparison, a couple of big items. I'll look through the whole thing that I looked at on the 23rd. General fund has decreased by $553,000. Electric fund increased by $2.3 million. This increase is simply due to cost of purchase of electricity. Another big item is the gas fund. It increased $2.3 million, also due to increasing gas purchases. The remaining two large items, the S2, 2003, 2007, both decreases over $2 million. Both of those are due to projects being completed in this fiscal year. And we'll talk to you about the budget comparison by type. Personnel has increased by $362,000. It's mainly due to insurance increases. More operating increased by $133,000. Personal commodities, as mentioned briefly, increased $6.3 million. School board operation decreased by $501,000. Debt services increased by $4.3 million. If you remember back in January, we issued chans that will need to be paid off this year. And capital projects has decreased almost $11 million. This is a graph of the last seven years budget comparison. You'll note in 2009, it jumped all the way to $169.5 million, and this year, 2014, proposed budget is at $145.2 million. In the last ten years of stating, you'll note that in 2009, we're at a high of 367 employees. We have actually come down this year from 360 last year to 358. Other points of the budget are we have included funds for the grant right to be shared with the Carter County, also sharing the cost of Keep American Beautiful, also sharing costs with city, county, mapping and phone system, and further sharing costs with economic development. Outside agency funding, this year, the proposed budget here is a total of $609,200 in it. One big difference in last year and this year is we've taken out the Downtown Development Authority as it is a part of the general fund budget. And finally, we'll talk a little bit on the water and sewer rates. Even the proposed increases that I'll talk about shortly, we will still be one of the smaller or less cost, I guess I should say, of the surrounding areas. You can see that the proposed cost goes up to $20.85 versus the current cost of $19.20. I'm sorry, the total cost for, actually, the water. The total cost is $42.13, and the current, I'm talking proposed, the current was $39.84. And the electric rates, again, compared to our, compared to Georgia power, we are below Georgia power. Again, this is for residential customers only. The funding we have residential gas. You'll note that the Cartersville gas system is $1.17 per term. That was for the time period of January 1st through December of the 31st of 2012, and that ranged from $1.17 per term all up to $1.53 per term. That is my presentation for the proposed budget.
This is the first reading. Any discussion needed by council at this time, or any questions for Tom?
Mr. Reinhardt, I have a question. What percentage of a salary, you may, you may not know this often, is a furlough day?
From my recollection, when I looked at the past, one furlough day for the city was about $90,000 costs overall.
But for an individual salary?
That would depend on individual salaries. I don't have that coming out of what we have a salary.
There is no percentage. I have down here 5%, but I'm not sure.
I don't have it. I don't want to quote something, and then it'd be a burden.
No, absolutely not. Thank you. But I was just thinking about all the considerations that went into this budget. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? Okay, this is the first reading. There is no action required by council now. We'll have a second vote at a future council meeting. Next item.
The water and sewer rate increase, four minutes is ahead of you. We've got a slide, a presentation here also. Remembering our May 1 sort of meeting, I talked about three increases. The first increase is a proportionate increase in the lowest tier rate. This is due to increased operational costs and maintenance costs. This will add about $1.40 per month for the average residential customer based on 7,500 gallons per gallon. The small increases proportionate increase have been occurring since 2007. The second increase is an increase in the monthly base water rate. Our current base water, monthly base rate is $6. Proposed increase is $6.90. This is a 15% increase. There's been no increase in this particular rate since its inception in 1988. And the third increase involves commercial fire service rates. The proposed increase is a 50% increase in both in-city and out-city limits. It's due, again, to maintenance costs of increasing all these water lines and need. And the water sewer rate, the proposed increase, like I said before, Cartersville will still remain one of the lowest residential rates in the surrounding areas, and these rates are increased, proposed rate increases are now associated with a decrease in capacity fee that was done seven years ago. And once again, we have the rate chart showing that we are, and we will remain one of the lowest in the surrounding areas.
Questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? Again, this is the first time we're seeing this. We'll take this up for final consideration at a future meeting. And Tom, if you'll move on to the next item, please.
And finally, honorable mayor and council, PSC has mandated that we have a new requirement for our toilets, the residential gas customer. The city is required to adopt a policy for Ford County and for the PSC regulations. We felt, I felt like that instead of just adopting it for Ford County, we need to also extend that to Marston County residents and also to DeFartville residents. Essentially, what this will do is, as long as a customer has new payment service history level for a plan for a month period, we will be required to return or refund the deposit money back to them, give a check back to them, or credit to their account. We also felt like that it was nice for us to extend this down to gas customers or also electric and water also.
Okay. Any questions on this item?
This is a time sensitive issue, as Gary mentioned, and it does need to go back to DSC about 20th of June, so if we can do anything to get that on next meeting, head up a, because I have a meeting.
Thank you, sir. Duly noted. All right, next item, Mr. Anderson, you have that item.
Mr. Mayor and council, for our Dillon Park pool, which we opened over Memorial Day weekend, we had a contract with the Dockery Group in an amount of $975,000 and $375,000. There were requested four change orders during this construction process. One was for the tying on of the park office sewer line, did an upgrade in some toilet paper dispensers. Then one change order was for the pressure testing and the repairing of leaks of our existing gutter system, which, which we, which we're able to use. And then we had a change order from concrete paint to stain. These change orders totaled $9,327, making our total contract with Dockery Group $984,376. I recommend approval of these change orders.
Okay, any discussion? And if there's none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the annual agreement. We have the Optimist Club for our July 4 celebration in Dillon Park. I recommend approval of this contract with Optimist Club.
Once again, any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the annual agreement. We have the Optimist Club for our July 4 celebration in Dillon Park. I recommend approval of this contract with Optimist Club.
Once again, any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the annual agreement. We have the Optimist Club for our July 4 celebration in Dillon Park. I recommend approval of this contract with Optimist Club.
Once again, any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the annual agreement. We have the Optimist Club for our July 4 celebration in Dillon Park. I recommend approval of this contract with Optimist Club.
Once again, any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Monek, you got the last one for us.
Mayor, council, the air conditioning unit at our distribution and collection office recently quit functioning. We had to replace it. Prior to that, we did receive prices from three separate vendors. Meadows Heating and Air submitted the lowest quote in about $5,400. They did provide the air conditioning documentation of that, and we recommend approval of this agreement with Meadows Heating and Air Conditioning Unit for $5,400.
Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second. No bid.
All right. You still in favor a little bit?
I am in favor a little bit.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Make up your mind. You need to step up to the...
What's the protocol on this?
The protocol would be to step up to the podium, give our clerk your name and address, please, sir.
Ricky Brooks, 227 Ed O'Wade Drive. We got a few other employees here, and I'm a retired, but we want to speak a little bit on the city item budget about the increase in retirees and current employees on the single coverage and family coverage on the insurance. I know I've had some conversation with some of the folks at City Hall, and I know it's kind of a hard issue to deal with as far as numbers, because I realize the cost of insurance is just something you can't beat this day and time, but this is the first time this ever fell where it's, I guess, so-called tie-in with the budget year and the fact that, you know, when we have a rollover period in the insurance, when we usually get the cost increase, it comes effective, comes first of January. We have a period usually in November and December where the insurance reps come and talk to us about it, but, and I don't know exactly what the shortfall in the budget is that related it to increases in insurance costs or whatever, but we have some other folks here, I don't know if they want to speak about it too, but we were just looking to some of the alternatives that might be another idea of where the cuts in the budget might be, where it doesn't fall solely on the employees and retirees paying that full cost of that insurance increase. And I know as far as a period of maybe 14 or 15 years, I don't know the exact numbers on it, as far as another broker involved or with getting different reps, and that's nothing against the Shaw agency, it's just, I know in some of the conversations I've had with other people, if that's an alternative or whatever, and I know it's a complicated issue as far as trying to get another broker, and what's available out there, I guess, is another issue with it, but the increase of, and so much at one time, I guess, is the main bottom line to it as far as, and I know it can relate it to a lot of things. I mean, I'm a retired, so I don't see on getting any ready increase in my retirement account, but I know the current employees probably had raises maybe one time in the last five years or so, and it's a hardship. And I know the city as far as, I see the financial reports or hear of them when I come to the council meetings and read about them in the paper, but, and I don't know where the other alternatives are to come up with some other measure, and helping so much of it falling into the category of us paying for our insurance, but we would definitely like to try to talk to y'all about some kind of other alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? If there's none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Didn't get a rump on that guy.[845.12][845.12](music)
Total cost is $40.13, and the current, I'm talking, proposed is the current was $39.86. And the electric rates, again, compared to our, compared to Georgia power, we are below Georgia power. Again, this is for residential customers only. Finally, we have residential gas. You'll note that the Cartersville gas system is $1.17 per term. That was for the time period of January 1st through December 31st of 2012, and that ranged from $1.17 per term all up to $1.53 per term. That is my presentation for the proposed budget.
This is the first reading. Any discussion needed by council at this time? Or any questions for Tom?
Mr. Reinhardt, I have a question. What percentage of a salary, you may not know this often, is a furlough day?
From my recollection, when I looked at past, one furlough day for the city was about $90,000 costs overall.
But for an individual salary?
That would depend on individual salaries. I don't have that coming out of a labor salary.
There is no percentage. I have down here 5%, but I'm not sure.
I don't have it. I don't want to quote something, and then it'd be a...
No, absolutely not. Thank you. But I was just thinking about all the considerations that went into this budget. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? Okay, this is the first reading. There is no action required by council now. We'll have a second vote at a future council meeting. Next item.
The water and sewer rate increase, all of which you have in front of you. I've got a slide, a presentation here also. Remembering our May 1st meeting, I talked about three increases. The first increase is the proportion increase in the lowest tier rate. This is due to increased operational costs and maintenance costs. This will add about $1.30 per month for the average residential customer based on 7,500 gallons per centimetre. The small increase is proportion increase that have been occurring since 2007. The second increase is an increase in the monthly base water rate. Our current base water, monthly base rate is $6. Proposed increase is $6.90. This is a 15% increase. There's been no increase in this particular rate since its inception in 1988. And the third increase involves commercial fire service rates. The proposed increase is a 50% increase in both in-city and out-of-city limits is due, again, maintenance costs of increasing all these water lines and need. And the water sewer rate is the proposed increase, like I said before, Cartersville will still remain one of the lowest residential rates in the surrounding areas, and these rates are increased, proposed rates usually are now associated with a decrease in capacity fees that were done seven years ago. And once again, we have the rate chart showing that we are and we will remain one of the lowest in the surrounding areas.
Questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? Again, this is the first time we're seeing this. We'll take this up for final consideration at a future meeting. And Tom, if you'll move on to the next item, please.
And finally, honorable mayor and council, PSC has mandated that we have a new requirement for our toilets for residential gas customers. The city is required to adopt a policy for Ford County and for the PSC regulations. We felt, staff felt like that instead of just adopting it for Ford County, we need to also extend that to Barter County residents and also to the Barter County residents. Essentially, what this will do is, as long as a customer has good payment service, history level for a plan for a month period, we will be required to return or refund the deposit money back to them, either through a check back to them or credited to their account. We also felt like that it was nice for us to extend this down to gas customers or also electric and water also.
Any questions on this item?
This is a time sensitive issue, as Gary mentioned, and it does need to go back to PSC by 20th of June, so if we can do anything to get that on next meeting and head up a, be telling everyone what meeting is.
Thank you, sir. Duly noted. All right, next item, Mr. Anderson, you have that item?
Yes, Mayor and council, for our Dillon Park pool, which we opened over Memorial Day weekend, we had a contract with the Dockery Group in amount of $975,000 and $300, $975,000 and $40,000. There were requested four change orders during this construction process. One was for the tying on of the park office sewer line, did an upgrade in some toilet paper dispensers. Then one change order was for the pressure testing and the repairing of leaks of our existing gutter system, which we were able to use. And then we had a change order from concrete paint to stain. These change orders totaled $9,327, making our total contract with Dockery Group $984,376. I recommend approval of these change orders.
Okay, any discussion? And if there's none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dan, next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is the annual agreement. We have the Optimus Club for July 4th celebration in Dillon Park. I recommend approval of this contract with Optimus Club.
Once again, any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a intergovernmental agreement with Barter County for a tiered rate structure for municipal solid waste fees at Landville. We currently pay $28 a tonne in this new rate structure. If we haul over 500 tonnes a month, we would be charged $26 a tonne. If we haul over $800 a month, we would be charged $25 a tonne. And if we haul over 1,000 tonnes a month, we would be charged $22 a tonne. We average about 940 tonnes a month. Last month, for example, we did haul over 1,000 tonnes, so we would potentially have saved about $6,000 in a month's time if we were under this agreement. So this is a, this is a money-saving arrangement for us.
So we tell everybody to throw away more stuff so we can get a better rate?
Well, actually, we've talked about that. If we're, if I have, if we're at $9.80, it's going to, we need to go find 20 tonnes somewhere.[1357.68][1357.68](laughter)
Now, is that yard waste or just household, or is that...
That is just municipal solid waste.
Okay.
That's commercial and residential garbage that we haul over at Landville.
Okay.
This is, Mayor, this is something that Tommy's been working on for the past couple of months, and his numbers are reflected in the next year's budget savings.
We've got somewhere to stockpile, like once we get to 1,001 pounds, we could, or tonnes, we could just kind of hold some for the next month?
That is a very good...[1382.18][1382.18](laughter) We need to figure out a way to make sure we're hauling over 1,000 tonnes a month.
Mayor, you can take it to the fire department and let them put water in it. Water it down a little more. It's a good idea.[1396.18][1396.18](laughter)
All right. Well, thank you for putting that together. Any discussion or any questions for Tommy on this item? If not, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Riggs, you got the next two.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is to purchase 200 residential meters to replenish our stock. We're recommending accepting the bid from the Love Better Equipment Controls, and it's $13,600. The next one is...
Hold on, let's, we'll do them one at a time. Thank you. If there's any questions, comments, or motions on that item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Continue on. Thank you.
The second one is, we have a section of the original eight-inch that has a stub that needs to be killed and we're going to tear up a shield and a casing. We need two eight-inch stopper fittings and then the labor to tap and stop and kill that section alive. And we're recommending accepting the bid from S.J. Patterson, it's $15,746.
It's a budget item too, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll be out of the budget.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Monax, you got the last one for us.
Mayor, council, the air conditioning unit at our district duty and collection office recently quit functioning. We had to replace it. Prior to that, though, we did receive prices from three separate vendors. Meadows Heating and Air submitted the lowest quote in a $5,400 dollar. They did provide the air condensate documentation with that, and we recommend approval of this agreement with Meadows Heating and Air Conditioning Unit for $5,400.
Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second. No bid.
All right. You still in favor a little bit?
I am in favor a little bit.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Any other business that needs to come before council this Make up your mind. You need to step up to...
What's the protocol?
The protocol would be to step up to the podium, give our clerk your name and address, please, sir.
Ricky Brooks, 227 Etowah Drive. We got a few other employees here, and I'm a retired, but we want to speak a little bit on the city item budget about the increase in retirees and current employees on the single coverage and family coverage on the insurance. I know I've had some conversations with some of the folks at City Hall, and I know it's kind of a hard issue to deal with as far as numbers, because I realize the cost of insurance is just something you can't beat this day and time, but this is the first time this ever fell where it's, I guess, so-called tie-in with the budget year and the fact that, you know, when we have a rollover period in the insurance, when we usually get the cost increase, it comes effective come 1st of January. We have a period usually in November and December where the insurance reps come to talk to us about it, but, and I don't know exactly what the shortfall in the budget is that related it to increases in insurance cost or whatever, but we have some other folks here. I don't know if they want to speak about it too, but we were just looking to some of the alternatives that might be another idea of where the cuts in the budget might be, where it doesn't fall solely on the employees and retirees paying that full cost of that insurance increase. And I know as far as a period of maybe 14 or 15 years, I don't know the exact numbers on it, as far as another broker involved or with getting different reps, and it's nothing against the Shaw Agency, it's just, I know in some of the conversations I've had with other people, if that's an alternative or whatever, and I know it's a complicated issue as far as trying to get another broker, and what's available out there, I guess, is another issue with it, but the increase of, and so much at one time, I guess, is the main bottom line to it as far as, and I know it can relate to a lot of things. I mean, I'm a retired, so I don't see on getting any ready increase in my retirement account, but I know the current employees probably had raises maybe one time in the last five years or so, and it's a hardship. And I know the city as far as, I see the financial reports or hear of them when I come to the council meetings and read about them in the paper, but, and I don't know where the other alternatives are to come up with some other measure and helping so much of it falling into the category of us paying for our insurance, but we would definitely like to try to talk to y'all about some kind of other alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? If there's none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.[1773.73][1773.73](gunshot)
We are adjourned. Didn't get a rump on that guy.